Good evening and welcome. The November 28, 2018 meeting of Long Branch City Council will now come to order. Roll call please.
Mr. Dangler?
Here.
Mr. Viera?
Here.
Dr. Boe?
Here.
Dr. Selly?
Here.
Mrs. Wittes?
Here.
Will everyone please stand for the flag salute?
Frank begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspaper in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law.
At this time, we have a presentation from the Shore Regional Surf Team. Will you please come forward?
Do you want us to come forward?
Oh, we'll come forward.
No, we'll come out.
Okay, thank you. This is a flag. Thank you for letting us use your beaches for the season.
We were forward to working with you guys next year. You had an amazing season. I really appreciate your support, letting us use your beaches.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. This is a lot on the path.
Thank you.
How'd you do?
I did good.
We killed it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, guys.
Very nice, thank you.
Good job.
Good job. Thank you.
They're adorable. Okay. We have to reschedule the next presentation, so we're going to move forward to presentation of awards to members of the Long Branch Police Department. Chief Robuck, would you please come forward?
Thank you. I have to keep you going. So, I just wanted to watch you together and go over the awards for the police department to show what they do for every day, give them everything they do, so we can have a pretty stringent award group that goes through them all. You don't want to give out too many because it makes it kind of worthless, and you don't want to give out none because then people will learn. So, we try to get the sweet spot. We have quite a few tonight. So, we're going to start with the Detective Bureau. Give you a clue of the best suit right there. Every month, we gather over the major cases that are happening in the city. And about halfway through the year, I realized that by the time we got together every month, most of those cases were solved. And we'd get up there and ask them about the case, and it's already done, they're already solved, and they already did everything they could do. So, I kind of kept watching that, and I noticed that pretty much every major case here in the last two years, the guys have been able to solve. It's a pretty incredible thing. It doesn't mean they solved every single case, except the major cases that your department is working into, and someone stole from you, sorry, probably did not get to that one. But they did solve all the major cases here. Let's just tell you a little bit about it. In the last seven years, we've had seven homicides here in the city. Fortunately, as I know from the teams, well, it's not going to last long, they've been solved. During the last two years also, they've had six arrests for attempted murder, one arrest for strict liability for drug-induced death, which means someone OD'd and they tracked it back to who actually sold them that narcotic and charged them. Twenty-five arrests for burglaries, eighteen arrests for robberies, sixteen arrests for aggravated assault, one arrest for aggravated arson, which fortunately doesn't happen all that often, and one arrest for stalking. Led by Detective Captain Michael McLean, Detective Lieutenant Jeffrey Paul D. K. P. at night, Detective Sergeant Jeffrey Cologne, Detective Sergeant Marshall Brown, and Detective Sergeant Brendan Cahill. They put together a great team that have been able to work together and solve, like we said, pretty much every major case that's happened in this city in the last two years. It's pretty unprecedented. You know, everybody in my 23 years, I think it's the best group of guys that are back there. They work together very, very well. They get the job done day in and day out. So, we'd like to present them all with a unit citation today, and I'll read one of them. For your dedication, performance, and ability to solve 100% of all major crimes, including set account homicide, made 2017 and 2018. Through swift actions and diligent, unrelenting determination displayed by your bureau, there was 70 major incidents resolved and suspect charged for crimes. Your professionalism is a true asset to the Long Branch Police Department. We'll start with the soon-to-be-retired Detective Captain Michael McLean. Thank you. Detective Sergeant Jeffrey Cologne. Detective Sergeant Brendan Cahill. Detective Sergeant Marshall Brown. Detective Michael Decker. Detective David Gruminski. Detective Joe Kenny. Detective Nicholas Romano. Detective Richard O. B. O'Brien. Detective Joseph Attali. Detective Michael Verdadero. Detective Daniel Richards. Andy, is Jerry Burke here? Detective Jerry Burke? We've got a couple more that could not make it. But again, gentlemen, thank you for your outstanding work. I have pictures for your uniforms here. I'll see you outside if we're done. Andy, is that you? Thank you once again for your work over the past few years. Sorry. Got a couple more to give out. Earlier this year, we had a tragic incident in a restaurant up town that I'm sure most of you have heard about. A murder happened there in that establishment. Due to the actions of the officers that first showed up there, the perpetrator was caught right on the scene. One of the most incredible stories I've ever heard and actually had to see probably in my 24 years here. Two members of the community helped to apprehend the suspect. We'll call them up first, and then we'll call up the officers up there, but after help, this could not have been done. So, Danilo, who's a taken? Speaking of heroic actions on the afternoon of August 21st where you selflessly aided and disarmed a suspect who had entered a restaurant shooting a patron, your willingness and ability to assist in a life-threatening altercation speaks volumes about your integrity and character. The Long Branch Police Department commends you for your actions and thanks you for your service. And the famous silver three dollars. Your swift heroic actions on the afternoon of August 21st where you selflessly disarmed a suspect who had entered a restaurant shooting a patron, the bravery you displayed in protecting your family and others during this life-threatening incident speaks volumes to your integrity and character. The Long Branch Police Department commends you for your actions and thanks you for your service. The next, so I'll just tell you a little bit about it. I don't want to go too much into it, but obviously there was shooting there that day. Those two men helped out before the officers arrived. First arriving officer on the scene was Officer George Semol, who went in to the restaurant and was immediately attacked by the suspect who then tried to grab his service weapon. They fought over it. Officer Semol with the help of Corporal Tracy Wittes, who came in next, was fortunately able to win that fight, got his service weapon away from the suspect, and was able to get him on the ground and take him and put him under arrest for the crime that day, stopping any other tragedies that may have happened. For that, Officer George Semol is going to get the Combat Cross for engaging in an armed fight with a suspect. It is the highest award that we can give here at the city of Long Branch. I don't remember getting one out, or I haven't seen anyone getting one out in 27 years. I could probably add in a few, but there are far and few between. So, it was an incredible thing to see. We actually got to see it. It was unbelievably selfish and brave act that he did to go in there and do that, put himself in harm's way, and did what he was supposed to do. So, it's great that you can come up here, but thank you. Your heroic actions on the afternoon of August 21st when you were flagged and assisted an unarmed suspect who had murdered a patron and was targeting others on the scene, your swift engagement with the suspect prior to the arrival of backup units prevented further injury and loss of life. Bravery and complete disregard for your safety displayed during this life-threatening incident speaks volumes to your integrity and ability as an officer. Your professionalism is a true asset to the Long Branch Police Department. And last but not least, Corporal Tracy Wittes, who was the second on scene. Come on up, Trace. Second on the scene, she, no hesitation whatsoever, jumped right into the fight, did what she had to do, was able to help George recover his weapon and get the suspect on the ground. Thankfully, she was there that fast, you don't know what would have happened if she wasn't there that fast, but she showed up fast, did exactly what she should have done, and we thank her for that. Your heroic actions on the afternoon of August 21st when you were trying to assist an unarmed suspect who had murdered a patron and was targeting others on the scene, your heroic actions in subduing the suspect allowed for your officers to maintain control of his duty weapon while the suspect attempted to remove it. Your quick response prevented further injury and loss of life. Bravery and complete disregard for your own safety displayed during this life-threatening incident speaks volumes as to your integrity and ability as an officer. Your professionalism is a true asset to the Long Branch Police Department and a distinguished service award to Corporal Tracy Wittes. Thank you once again for allowing us to do this today, just a small tribute to what these officers do every day to protect you here in the city of Long Branch. I'll ask for letting us do this. Thank you.
We also want to thank you for everything you do, and when you put your lives on line for us, there's more to that, and we do this every day because we're there for us. Thank you.
Thank you, officers, for your bravery, for your valor, for all that you do, as the council president would have said, to put your life on the line every day. And to all the children and family members who are here, a thank you to you as well. I'm the son of a Long Branch police officer, so I know that it's not an easy thing for you every single day as well, so thank you as well for your stuff.
Okay.
I need a motion to approve the minutes of November 15, 2018.
So moved.
Second. Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
I'm staying.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Boe?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
There are no considerations of ordinances. Ordinances for introduction. This is the first reading of ordinance 27-18 entitled an ordinance authorized in the execution of a lease agreement in connection with the carousel and a portion of the Pure Village District of the Oceanfront Broadway redevelopment area. I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise and post according to law, and set the public hearing for December 12, 2018. So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
I'm staying.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Boe?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
There are no considerations of ordinances. Ordinances for introduction. This is the first reading of ordinance 27-18 entitled an ordinance authorized in the execution of a lease agreement in connection with the carousel and a portion of the Pure Village District of the Oceanfront Broadway redevelopment area. I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise and post according to law, and set the public hearing for December 12, 2018. So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Boe?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
At this time, I need a motion to open the public portion of the meeting for all comments.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
If anyone in the audience has any comments to make, please step to the microphone and state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once. I need a motion to close the public...
No, that's some...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I have another summer.
One-minute notification, Vincent Laporte, 33, Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. It's a great disgust again that I come before this council meeting. I received a copy of the best practices worksheet today. Why it's so late is disgusting as well. Item number 40 on it talks about future financing with bond anticipation notes. We have a resolution this evening, R-26418, which is equally as sickening. The resolution, Mr. Martin, does the figure represent the original principal and all the incurred interest through your closing date of the MCI on December 20, 2018?
No, I think there's additional fees.
How much is the accrual?
The accrual?
Yes.
Of what?
How much is the accrual of the interest savings?
The accrual, there's no savings. We're not refunding anything. We're just transitioning from notes to bonds. We're selling bonds.
These are all bond anticipation notes?
Yes.
Does the lump sum include all the issuance costs?
Does the lump sum include the issuance costs?
Yes.
Yes.
It does. All right. In the paragraph on the front page, the fourth paragraph, it states the MCI is necessary to combine the bonds authorized under said ordinance into one consolidated issue. Fifty-seven percent of the bands being aggregated in this general obligation bond tonight represent asset and acquisitions and capital improvements by the city that have already been displayed as having respective periods of usefulness of less than 14.22 years. Additionally, the bands just presented have already been paying interest from 2014. Once again, just like the Schneider administrations, of which Cologne and Selly were part of, the city is proposing to finance asset acquisitions and capital improvements for terms that far exceed their original intended usefulness. Tonight's resolution alleges the county has insisted that the entire 22669165 be done in a single offering. This is absurd. So, the county is now demanding a financing scheme that requires 57% of the proposed general obligation bond that is primarily composed of 10-year notes be financed for a term that exceeds their originally intended useful life. Tonight's bond should have been broken into two issues so as to properly portray the basic usefulness of the prior acquired various assets. The city found it necessary between 2014 and 2016 to finance through bands, asset and capital improvements that had a useful life of 10 years. And now, we're two to four years into their useful life, our witness resolution being refinanced at the start of 2019 as a long-term debt with maturity expected in 2033. That's 19 years after the original financing was put into place. Nineteen years to pay off a usefulness of 10 years. This is junk government Long Branch style. Same old, same old. To the people in Long Branch, it continues to be your fault. Just like Team Cologne smoked you on convicted felon Developer Kushner's 30-year pilot tax abatement, the people of Long Branch are letting Team Cologne get away with this one. The fact is, with tonight's resolution, the city will be paying interest for nearly two times the useful life of these assets.
Mr. Lord, you have one minute.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So, counsel, don't even come close to saying you've achieved interest savings with this resolution. I'm requesting a no vote, should you proceed to vote, but better yet, I'm requesting that this resolution be pulled. And if you think you're up to a deadline on it and you can't pull it, well, you better rethink again, because you can hold Chief Financial Officer Martin for delaying this for tonight in proximity of the deadline for MCI. Again, I'm requesting a no vote on this resolution. Team Cologne was elected and junk government. You're just continuing junk government.
Mayor Cologne, I called just on a good note.
Renee, could you lower the microphone just a little bit?
On a good note, I wanted to say thank you to, I don't know how many of you involved in the horrible experience we were having at the Gregory. We're still enduring, but a lot has been done. Many of us are back in our homes as seniors of the Gregory. Special thanks to Mayor Cologne. I'm still struggling with rehab, which I'm finding out now is much longer than I thought it was going to be, but it breaks my heart a little bit to see that seniors struggle so hard in our community, in our society, and that this mold went unabated for over a year before it was addressed, and I mostly blame the administration sitting at the office right there at the Gregory. Ms. Wright, Gloria Wright, the new ED of Long Branch Housing is new to this process, but it appears that a lot of the building construction was done shabbily and incorrectly, that this could have been headed off if it was attacked sooner. So, many people had to go to another location. We're given three and a half days to prepare what they should take with them, and we're not told by the manager at the Gregory's office, I'll withhold her name, I don't know why, as to what should be covered up or put away or protected. And so, now, those of us that moved back home are still enduring locating their personal effects, and some items are actually missing. They may not even be stolen. It's the fact that many of us feel violated and are having to go through our homes, and in my case, with only one good leg, putting things back, looking for things that are missing and so on. So, we continue this fight, struggle, if you will, to get back and get everything abated. Everybody's working really hard to try to make it habitable again, and so, if the city council has anything to do with it, if we can have good management coming from housing and from Conifer, I blame Conifer for a lot of this. They did not put the right person in the office at the Gregory, and so, a lot of us suffered as a result of that. And so, I asked for oversight in an email, I think, John, you remember that, and I'm hoping that there will be some neutral oversight that is not connected to Long Branch or Conifer that will be overseeing this and make sure that everything happens equitably for seniors, and thank all of you. Good evening.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Selvina Felicio, and I live 64 South Fifth Avenue in the corner of Swakom and Fifth Avenue. In the last four months, I have spent more than $2,000 fixing and replacing my tires because the hardwood flooring companies bring their vans and exchange materials back and forth. For some reason, that street is very popular. Yesterday, they even parked on my driveway. That's the reason I'm dressed like this. I worked all day, and I had to go fix one of my tires. It's getting to be very costly for me, and I would like if a measure was taken to address this problem. I don't know if someone else has it, but I do, and it's getting to be very costly to me. And as a taxpayer, I think I have the right to ask for help, because I had no idea what to do. And after a heated argument yesterday, I've seen these vans parked on my own driveway and leaving my house, and the light in my car tells me that I have an L already. And I called an attorney, and I made an appointment, and I showed up, because I think someone needs to address this. The commercial vans parking there, it's not about the parking, it's about what they do and the damage that they are causing, and it's getting to be costly for me.
Renee, could you lower the microphone just a little bit? Thank you.
On a good night, a good note, I wanted to say thank you to, I don't know how many of you involved in the horrible experience we were having at the Gregory. We're still enduring, but a lot has been done. Many of us are back in our homes as seniors at the Gregory. Special thanks to Mayor Pallone. I'm still struggling with rehab, which I get, I'm finding out now is much longer than I thought it was going to be. But it, it breaks my heart a little bit to see that seniors struggle so hard in our community, in our society, and that this mold went unabated for over a year before it was addressed. And I mostly blame the administration sitting at the office, right there at the Gregory. Ms. Wright, Gloria Wright, the new ED of Long Branch Housing is new to this process. But it appears that a lot of the building construction was done shabbily and incorrectly, that this could have been headed off if it was attacked sooner. So, many people had to go to another location. We're given three and a half days to prepare what they should take with them, and we're not told by the manager at the Gregory's office, I'll withhold her name, I don't know why, as to what should be covered up or put away or protected. And so, now those of us that moved back home are still enduring locating their personal effects, and some items are actually missing. They may not even be stolen. It's the fact that many of us feel violated and are having to go through our homes, and in my case, with only one good leg, putting things back, looking for things that are missing and so on. So, we continue this fight, struggle, if you will, for, to get back and get everything abated. Everybody's working really hard to try to make it habitable again. And so, if the city council has anything to do with it, if we can have good management coming from housing and from Conifer. I blame Conifer for a lot of this. They did not put the right person in the office at the Gregory. And so, a lot of us suffered as, as a result of that. And so, I asked for oversight in an email, I think, John, you remember that. And I'm hoping that there will be some neutral oversight that is not connected to Long Branch or Conifer that will be overseeing this and make sure that everything happens equitably for seniors. And thank all of you. Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Silvina Felicio, and I live 64 South 3rd Avenue, in the corner of Swakam and 5th Avenue. In the last four months, I have spent more than $2,000 fixing and replacing my tires because the hardwood flooring companies bring their vans and exchange materials back and forth. For some reason, that street is very popular. Yesterday, they even parked on my driveway. That's the reason I'm dressed like this. I worked all day and I had to go fix one of my tires. It's getting to be very costly for me. And I would like if a measure was taken to address this problem. I don't know if someone else has it, but I do, and it's getting to be very costly to me. And as a taxpayer, I think I have the right to ask for help because I had no idea what to do. And after a heated argument yesterday, I've seen these vans parked on, on my own driveway and leaving my house, and the light in my car tells me that I have an L already. And I called an attorney and I made an appointment and I showed up because I think someone needs to address this. The commercial vans parking there, it's not about the parking, it's about what they do and the damage that they are causing. And it's getting to be costly for me because I am an average person. But to spend this much money in about four months, I think is a bit too much, and I think this problem needs to be addressed, addressed at least. Thank you for your time.
Can you stay, ma'am, I'm sorry, if you could stay a little after the meeting, I'd like to talk to you a moment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? No? Okay, I need a motion to close the public participation portion of this meeting.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We can take the listed resolutions as a consent agenda?
Motion, you want?
I need a motion.
Second.
So, so moved.
Mary Jane.
Second.
Mr. Dangler.
Yes.
Mr. Viera.
Yes.
Doctor Vogt.
Yes.
Doctor Selly.
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes.
Yes.
I need a motion to approve the listed applications.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Dangler.
Yes.
Mr. Viera.
Yes.
Doctor Vogt.
Yes.
Doctor Selly.
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes.
Yes. At this time, I'd like to ask Councilman Dangler, do you have any words this evening?
No, not at this point.
No? Councilman Viera?
I want to thank everybody for coming, and I'd like to commend our police force that did a very well job, and most of them are gone. And I'll see you next week, in a couple of weeks.
Councilwoman Vogt?
So, two things. First of all, you know, I always like to talk about, you know, what was my moment and what are your moments of Long Branch pride as we come together just about every other week. Chief Robach, tonight, you and your whole staff just stole the show. You know, you reminding us, we can never take our freedom for granted, and like the council president said, you all, and, and your men and women put their lives on the line, and so we so, so appreciate it. Certainly a moment of Long Branch pride. Another moment of Long Branch pride, and I want to refer to Resolution 263, which is the resolution accepting a donation for a Blue Badge-style beach wheelchair. And I'm going to bring you back to the end of the summer, in August, when our folks that run the motions organization for people with disabilities had an accessible, had an accessible beach party. And most of us attended for, for a while, I think you were there, for the, for the whole thing. It was extraordinarily heartwarming, people who have not been able to get on the beach for years. We, special efforts were made so that they could be on the beach. As a result of that, a friend of mine, whose husband was disabled, she had a beach wheelchair for him. And unfortunately, he passed away not too long ago, and so she wanted that chair to be put to the best use possible. And so, she donated it to the city as a gift, and will be used primarily by our, our friends and our colleagues at motions. So, I just want to give a shout out to Rose Karesh, who lives in Ocean View Towers, and her dear husband Tommy. And I'm sure that chair is going to get a lot of good use, so.
Councilwoman Selly?
I have two things tonight. First of all, I'd like to congratulate all the people who are honored. They've done a great job.
Cookies. So, please come, and it's rain or shine. So, if it does rain, the event will be held in the library. There's a holiday toy drive coming up. The Long Branch Recreation Department is collecting new toys, books, stuffed animals at the Bucky James Center. The toys collected will be given out at the annual Christmas party, with all, all children are invited to attend on December 19th. I'm not sure of those hours. And then, the senior center is having their annual holiday bazaar. That's Friday, next Friday, December 7th, from 10:00 to 2:00 at the senior center, which is at 85 Second Avenue. Their gifts for everyone on your list, admission is free, and all proceeds will benefit the center programs. And the last thing I want to mention is the Long Branch Beach Badges are on sale. They make a great holiday gift. That's, they're on sale from November 1st to January 31st at the Recreation Department, which is at Wilbur Ray Avenue, and the tax office here at City Hall. The prices are $40 for adults ages 30, 18 to 61. That's a $5 discount. I believe it comes in a little gift box. And for students ages 14 to 17, it's $25, which I think is also a $5 discount from the normal $30 price. It's cash only, and, you know, please note that these are not, these are, this is only for the Long Branch Municipal Beaches. But again, thank you for being here this evening, and happy Hanukkah, and all the best to everyone. Have a great weekend.
Thank you, Mayor. And I also want to wish everyone a happy Hanukkah as well. And also, we're in the process of forming the Office of Volunteerism, our committee, and if anyone's interested in participating, want to be a part of the committee, please contact our city clerk. And we, we plan on having a meeting, you know, in the very near future. So, if you're interested in being a part of that, please contact us. We really appreciate it. And hope everyone has a great evening, and thank you for coming out this evening. I need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.